Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to speak on Item 16 regarding Pure Water Oceanside. Tonight's action is to approve a professional services agreement in the amount of 1.162 with Tetra Tech. By way of background, this project started in 2014 with a professional services agreement awarded to RMC. As part of that contract, they prepared the indirect potable reuse study and pathogen removal study, and this study ultimately recommended a project to replenish the Mission And late in 2016, council approved a second professional services agreement with RMC for preliminary design services. And of note, the geotechnical investigations, which really modeled the groundwater in the Mission Basin was really important. This work is still ongoing and should be completed in the next few months. The near-term phases are listed here and include the construction that will occur in the next few years. Tonight's action is to approve Phase 2B and 2C. The earlier action for 2A was approved in April of this year. This is what tonight's project looks like. It includes conveyance or pipeline outlined in blue on this map, as well as three wells which will serve to deliver water into the Mission Basin. The action also includes construction management and inspection of the wells. And to recap on what Pure Water Oceanside is, it's a local water supply project that will produce a drought-proof and environmental-sound supply. It's being driven by council's goal to establish 50 percent local water supplies by 2030, as well as to roll off imported water. We're highly dependent on it at this time. Pure Water Oceanside will include these treatment components: microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and ultraviolet light, and advanced oxidation. Successful programs are already operating in Orange County. This is the largest project in the world of its kind, and the other three are planned for the Southern California area. In moving forward with the project, staff sent out an RFP in July to 12 consulting firms. We received three proposals. Six staff reviewed those proposals and ultimately recommended Tetra Tech for the project. Tonight's action has an estimated fee of 1.162, which will be funded from the Pure Water Oceanside project. Staff's recommendation is to approve the professional services agreement. And with that, I will take questions, should there be any.
Any public?
Yes, we have one.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Not, 127, Sherry Lane. I've been asked about the results of the pathogen removal study and also medication residual filtering for public safety. And I'm asking the Director of Water Department, can you briefly provide information to settle this concern? Also, as part of the disclosure, I've sat on the city's Water Quality Standards Committee about 20 years ago, and was also with some of the leading cities' environmentalists on that committee. I've also sat on the city's Utilities Commission and was vice chairman for a few years. I support this proposal mainly because, A, it supplements our water source to help our city become water-independent; B, it helps break the chains that binds us to the Metropolitan Water District. And as you know, they have been basically robbing Oceanside, every consumer in this city, with skyrocketing rates. And if people don't like that, this proposal, give your wallet over to Metropolitan. They'll take it. And also, C, to assist the city in addressing recurrent water droughts, which have been experienced by everyone in this city for years. Those are the three main reasons why I support this measure. So if that first question can be answered to settle some of the public concerns, I can get them off my back. Thank you.
Ms. Dale, do you want to address his issue?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I included a web address there that has additional information on the project, which includes some of the treatment techniques. That's a great place for information, but pharmaceuticals are removed through reverse osmosis, which is included as part of the treatment process.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. We've been moving towards this direction, and very positively. We knew it was going to take funding to get here. In the end, we are going to be able to have, reach our goal of 50 percent, and who knows, maybe go beyond that. So I'm going to move approval.
Councilmember Kern?
I will second that, but I have just a couple of questions. Basically, the one, where are the injection wells going to be in relationship to the extraction wells? Am I missing something in this, locations? And how much, I don't know what the numbers would be as far as, how much will we inject versus how much will we extract out of these wells? Okay, so I see those. And so, are we, we're treating the water before injection, and then when we extract it, we run it back through another purification system after we extract it. Basically, that's the San Luis Rey, or the plant now that we do, right? Am I correct in that assumption?
Councilmember Kern, there's quite a few questions there. Let me see if I can remember all of them. The injection wells are shown here on the slide in yellow circles. There is one off of Rio Vista Drive and two off of Cocoa Palms Drive. And they would, the water would be injected there and then extracted at the Mission Basin groundwater purification facility, which is shown in the lower left-hand corner of that slide. In terms of what is going into the ground, there's 3 million gallons per day that would be injected into there. We're hoping that will be extracted on the back end at the Mission Basin facility.
That's quite a distance. Is there like a time estimate that this water gets injected versus the water is taken out?
There are state regulations that require that there be at least a three-to-four-month residence time in the aquifer, and so that's why the groundwater modeling was so important, to ensure that the water stayed there for that amount of time before it was extracted at the wells.
Okay. Well, thank you, because one of the things they talked about, you know, as far as the purification system sounded more like a direct potable reuse program than an indirect one. So that's what kind of threw me off a little bit about how quickly it came, because it sounded like a direct project instead of an indirect project. Anyway, I'm going to, I second the motion of approving.
Deputy Mayor Lowry?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question about one of the operating plants right now, Professor. When, the Monterey Plant you listed here that we visited last year when we were on that water conference tour, and how long have they been in operation there, about?
Deputy Mayor Lowry, I don't know for sure. I think it's been a year or two. It's been a short amount of time in comparison to the Orange County facility.
And are we, is our footprint going to be as significant as theirs was there? They had a pretty large facility.
Ours is fairly small, but still significant.
And where is their water bound that they make there? Does that go into the general water supply, or is it used for all agricultural? Because I remember it was all surrounded by strawberry fields, I think.
That's my understanding, is that it's also a potable supply.
For people and plants?
Yeah, that injected in the ground.
Okay. That plant was, was it producing, it was producing potable water there as well as injecting it into the ground?
That's my understanding.
I'm going to have to go back and look that up.
I know.
I took a lot of notes at the Monterey. Well, I'm glad we went to that, so I can get an idea of what it looks like. It is significantly different than what we've got to deal with here. They had the ocean right up against it, and I can't even imagine how they dealt with that. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Right, I forgot to ask this question, because we did receive one email from some work that was being done at the San Luis Rey Treatment Plant about the noise and, you know, the kind of interruptions. So is there going to be, I mean, we're going to be talking about the wells and the conveyance, so there's going to be some amount of construction. Is there going to be outreach, or are there going to be certain times of the day that this is going to be going on?
Councilmember Sanchez, with any construction project, there's going to be impacts such as noise, and so our intent is to do outreach to the community that would be affected by any construction occurring in the area.
And is there a timeline? Is this going to be done like after, like next year or the year after? What's the plan?
The goal is to get the construction done by 2022, so it's a fairly fast-paced construction timeline.
By 2022?
2022.
Okay. So, but it's not going to happen during like, say, the December, like, construction-wise?
That is unknown at this time. The action this evening is for the design, and then as we get closer to awarding a construction contract, we can inform the council on the timeline.
All right. Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approves, 5-0.
At this time, we'll go to Item 20, and we'll have Mr. Sammy Lennox address the
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I live at 519 Capistrano Drive, over in the Capistrano Park neighborhood. I'm also very vocal in email and everything, so I've seen quite a few of you either in email or otherwise. The San Luis Rey River Valley is a very special place. It's so special that about eight agencies all want to have their hand in telling us what we can do with it. There's a lot of endangered bird species, and as we've talked about earlier, hundreds of people want to live in it. The city of Oceanside has a very important role in stewardship of this area. It's part of what made Oceanside Oceanside. It's right there. It's part of the reason why the Mission was formed. Right now, I don't think that stewardship is being properly carried out. I think the city is doing an amazing job with a lot of the restrictions that we currently have. But I think more needs to be done. I think we might be able to form a committee of some sort involving some city employees and perhaps some civilians to look to see what else can be done. I'd like to see this area, particularly by the harbor, turned into something like Buena Vista Lagoon, Bataquitos, or Santa Lejo. We talk a lot about open spaces. We talk a lot about nature that we want to preserve. This is already an area that Oceanside is tacked with preserving and also keeping open. We've already talked about how important and environmental this area is. You know, I think we need to look at what else can be done to preserve this area. I don't talk about this lightly, and I don't talk about this without knowing some of the restraints that we already have. I've talked with the Army Corps of Engineers. I've also met with many individuals in the city. Earlier last week, I talked with Public Works. At the Ariat Carmelo, which is the harbor parking lot going east, there's already a trail that was designed there by an Eagle Scout. This area is to the north of the area that has the no trespassing signs for the preserved habitat. There's already a trail that exists in this area. It would take some work, but we could make this area into a place where it identifies some of the native species of plants and animals and birds. If you follow that path up, it goes to Capistrano Park. From that area, you can follow it down and something magical happens. You walk each past Capistrano Park, and you walk down into the valley, and the noise from the freeway disappears, and you're out in nature. This is an area that can be accessible to our schools and to our residents. It is an area that can be available to our tourists as well. We talk about the importance of agritourism and of the environment. Right now, the San Luis Rey River Valley in this area is a liability for the city. We've heard earlier about all the problems that we have. One of the tools we have to address the negative traffic in an area is by creating positive traffic. I think it is possible for us to partner with the other agencies that are involved in this area, and within the confines that we have, really turn this into a gem at the top of Oceanside. So I'd like you to consider making this a possibility. Thank you.[942.82][942.82](APPLAUSE).
How many speakers on Item 21?
Thirty.
Then we'll do two minutes each, please. If you could call four at a time, and you could line up at the podium if she calls your name.
So the first speaker, sorry, Jimmy Not, Joe Hood, Michael Odegaard, and Damian Johnson.
Jimmy Not, 127, Sherry Lane. First, I want to thank everyone who contributed to the ultimate decision to award me this honor in recognition of being the Senior Citizen of the Year. I can't deny it anymore.[1014.13][1014.13](APPLAUSE).
So Jimmy, did they check your ID, make sure you qualify?
Get the discounts right. I also want to personally thank Councilmember Feller for emceeing the ceremony, also the Park and Recs Selection Committee, this council, and Mayor Weiss for declaring October the 11th Jimmy Not Day. It's an honor to have a whole day named after you. I also want to take and acknowledge all the other nominees who have also helped this city succeed. They deserve this award as well. And I also want to thank everyone who volunteers in this city. We could not really operate this city without the volunteers. And I encourage everyone, if you want something to do, or you feel alone, or feel like you're not doing anything, or you're stuck at home, looking at the TV, open that door and say, "I'm here, I'm willing, use me." That's a very simple thing. Also, we have so many needs in our city and the senior community. Our senior nutrition program is currently being faced with a fiscal challenge. Sand Egg, I went to a meeting today with the senior needs is being basically ignored in their 2050 plan. This needs to be addressed. Senior medical services are cross-linked, and we need to take and have advocacy there. There are so many needs that need to be addressed, but yet the volunteers are so few. So if you can offer a few hours a week, please give them. And I thank you once again for giving me this honor.
I'm Joe Hood again, still interested in climate change. I want to congratulate you on the Platinum Level Beacon Spotlight Award for Sustainability Practices, and urge you to continue with greenhouse gas and energy efficiency to achieve platinum awards. I'd like to ask you to quickly imagine with me the ability to bring beneficial impacts to Oceanside, to improve health of citizens, to increase the survival of all species and ecosystems, to improve security, to increase jobs, to increase economic benefits, and even to increase peace and much more, and, by the way, solve the climate change problem. Is that doable? I argue yes. There are four key overriding items: embrace net-zero energy buildings, net-zero energy generation, net-zero emission vehicles, and net-zero waste. Underneath those four items are several dozen specific actions that are here, doable now, implementable now, that my colleagues and I have identified and we'd like to propose to you. They will draw down carbon in the environment, in the atmosphere. They'll create jobs. They'll increase property values, and help develop an ever-more beautiful city. You have that opportunity, right here, right now. We are prepared to volunteer, to work with you, as we just heard, to work with you and work with the city, to help identify, to help flush out these several dozen items and make them happen. I also want to say I've had in-depth conversations with Larry Cornet, candidate for City Council from District 2.
Please wrap it up.
Larry, yes, I am. Larry is all-in on these climate solutions, and I want to say I endorse Larry as a climate champion for Oceanside City Council.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, this is my final installment on my report. Can you please put that back on the, on my report on the Vine Street project? We left off talking about Jack Feller's conflict of interest, and I want to pick up from there to talk about some of the correspondence between myself and the city attorney. Things that happened that night I think we all should be concerned about. The reason why Jack was allowed to vote that night, to cast a tie-breaking vote, to manufacture consent for the Tides Project, was because our city attorney felt that he had adequate proof that there wasn't a conflict of interest, or at least it was an allowable one. And I think that all conflicts are, I think, should not be allowed to proceed. In this case, let's look at the communication saying that there would be some documents to substantiate the actual ownership. The question at hand was who were the owners of the LLC. Westlow, who was Mr. Feller's employer, was included on the application that came to the city council, which, let's see. And the day of the entitlements, there were some correspondence going back and forth with the city attorney as to, you know, who actually was on that document. And the document that was provided by the lawyer member of the LLC, Mr. Gross, sort of quotes, he looks like he's quoting a section that says that Timothy Aldrich, trustee under the trust agreement of dated September 26, Suzanne Aldrich, an individual, an alcoholic property, is a California general.
Please wrap it up, Mr. Odegaard.
Pardon me?
Please wrap it up, Mr. Odegaard.
Okay. Well, the problem here is that there is no document. That was a fabrication. That's a fraud.
Thank you.
And because of that, we have made recommendations to the city about ways to avoid these problems in the future, and it's for this reason I'm offering my candidacy.
Thank you.
To make sure that that gets carried out. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a local nursing home administrator, and I've attended several city council meetings in the past regarding the city's attempts to regulating marijuana, its cultivation, processing, and manufacturing. And I understand that the marijuana business application period has recently closed on October 1st, and that staff has begun the review process, which will occur in four phases concluding with a final score. I also understand that the city manager makes the final decision based on that score and awards the contract, and that there are 11 selection criteria for awarding of points for this final score. My question and concern is when in this process do the citizens have the opportunity to provide their perspective? For example, one of the 11 selection criteria is Neighborhood Compatibility Plan. The applicant, the marijuana business, writes his point of view. Parents and other community members wonder when we will have that opportunity, those who live and work in this neighborhood, having a chance to share our opinion on whether this business proposes a nuisance at this particular location. Is there only one point of view? The business owner, whose interest is monetary. We wonder how transparent will the selection process be? Will the public know before a final decision is made? Could there be a step where the city manager's decision could be considered in a public setting or announcement before it is final? A public setting would provide the opportunity for citizens to provide information not known to the city and not disclosed by the applicant. And is there an appeal process for this decision? Thank you.
Next, I have a group of eight people that requested to speak in order. It's Tris Carpenter, Tony Scroff, Joel, and Kristi.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tris Carpenter, and I'm the chief negotiator for the MICO union that is affiliated with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you to give you a status report on our negotiations for a successor memorandum of understanding between MICO and the city. I'm here tonight to give you an update. The city, as I'm sure you're aware, has not changed its position on any of the items that are in question in our negotiations. And yesterday, the MICO negotiating team met with the management team, and we rejected the city's last best and final offer. There's been no recognition of the sacrifice these employees have made for several years while the city was dealing with difficult economic times. If you recall, MICO employees received just 4.5 percent pay raise spread over eight years. Administrative secretary pay went up a grand total of $1 an hour over that eight years. To offer no future reward for their sacrifices means spirited, and to be honest, very shortsighted. You risk losing the most loyal employees the city has. So I expect that we will probably start the impasse process relatively shortly and be meeting with the city manager to start that process, then possibly mediate or enter into fact-finding if we don't come to some sort of agreement. It's my fervent hope that you fully appreciate the message you are sending to these long-term loyal employees by refusing to offer a real cost-of-living raise to them. You're telling them that you don't care about their hard work for the city and its residents, and that you don't care about the loyalty that they've shown over all of these years and the sacrifices that they've made, and that you don't care about the families they need to feed and take care of. As I've gotten older, I've figured out one thing that is kind of key. You can get an awful lot of goodwill with a very small amount of appreciation shown, and conversely, you can destroy an awful lot of goodwill by not showing any appreciation at all. You're on the verge of destroying the goodwill that you have with these employees, and I urge you to direct your negotiators to put a more realistic increase on the table that is more in line with the loyalty and the sacrifice that these employees have shown over these years.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss and members of the council. My name is Tony Schroth. I'm here on behalf of AFSMI Council 36 and MICO. At your last meeting, I spoke about the rising cost of living in San Diego County. The sum of the data I presented was that the cost of living in this county has risen 27 percent over the last five years. Take away the 4.5 percent increase that MICO has received over the past eight years, and we've got about 22.5 percent more to go. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the effect that that rising cost of living has had on the population of California. The Legislative Analyst Office is the California Legislature's nonpartisan fiscal and policy advisor. In February of this year, they published this study, which I put up on the projector, finding that California is losing residents via domestic migration. Oceanside needs to react to this information if it wants to recruit and retain an effective professional workforce. Other cities have done so. In San Diego, the workforce- In San Diego, the workforce has received 3.3% increase this year and is receiving another 3.3% next year. Coronado gave 3% this year and another 2.75% next year. In Poway, 2% this year. Encinitas, 2% this year. And finally, Chula Vista, 2% this year and 2% next year. These cities are reacting to this information and realizing that they need to do something. They need to act now. I encourage you, here at the city of Oceanside, to do the same. My point is this: the cost of living increase that we're proposing, it's not just charity. We're not here asking for a favor. We're asking for you to work with us so that the city's workforce can remain as excellent as it always has been. If you're going to hear from that workforce tonight, I encourage you to pay your best attention and give them the, the respect that they deserve by giving them this cost of living increase that we're asking for, that we're proposing across the table. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, council, city staff. My name is Joel Menard. I've been a city employee for 17 years. I'm currently the maintenance supervisor for Public Works in the Parks Division. I'm here to speak to you about a salary comparison study that was requested and then rejected. The cost of living, as the gentleman just before spoke, has been going up and up, and my family has had to cut back on normal spending one too many times just to get by. Plus, putting two kids through college doesn't make it any easier. And talking to my peers in the surrounding cities and asking them what they make and what they're responsible for in comparison to what I am responsible is, is far less with higher pay. More times than not, I get the, you're not, you're kidding me response when I talk to them about what I'm responsible and what they are. I've been tasked many times, I have been tasked time and time again to do more with less to complete every project given. I'm not sure if you've been down at the beach or in the parks lately, but, and seen all the positive changes, but I have not seen the parks and the beaches look any better, or look better. Just to go whatever I'm responsible for, the Parks Department, which consists of 31 parks and are sites comprised of 200-plus acres of landscaped turf, planters, parking lot, 18 restroom facilities, tennis courts, basketball courts, hockey rinks, and everything else that goes along with it. The median maintenance program consists of 55 acres of landscaped medians, parkways, and slopes. The street tree program, which consists of approximately 70,000 trees, and we're getting ready to plant 100 more through the Tri-City Area to help with the Climate Action Plan. And in 2014, I was given the beach and the pier to also maintain. And the maintenance program, which consists of approximately three miles of beach, five restroom facilities, bandshell, beach, OPD office, and everything else. I staff these two programs 12 hours a day, seven days a week. I maintain all five programs with 12 full-time employees and 4,000-hour employees. The last time one person had this responsibility was in the early 90s, and they had the title of superintendent.
If you could wrap it up, Mr. Menard, please.
Okay, thank you. I can positively say that there is not one person in the city of San Diego or in the county that has the responsibility for what I am tasked to do. I'm just looking for a, to be compensated fairly, as others in the city have been compensated. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kristy Fritley. And a little bit, my husband, along with several of the other supervisors from Public Works, will speak about their ongoing fight for a fair wage. In one of the graphs from two weeks ago, you saw how much the cost of living has increased in San Diego County. The cost of groceries has gone up, yet my husband's salary has remained the same. The cost of utilities has gone up, yet my husband's salary has remained the same. Even the cost of Little League fees and sports equipment has gone up, yet my husband's salary has remained the same. By staying in his current position, one could argue that my husband has taken a pay cut to continue his employment with the city. The leaders have been able to match their own salaries to the increased cost of living, yet the management employees of the city of Oceanside are not afforded the same respect. And to me, that doesn't seem like an effective way to lead. I put a quote up here, and I love this quote because it perfectly sums up my husband's approach to being a supervisor for the city. The people who work with him know that he will never ask them to do something that he hasn't already done himself, or is willing to try himself. In fact, since most of the city's electricians can't afford to live in the very city in which they work, they often can't respond as quickly to calls after hours, and it's my husband who has to put on his work boots in the dark of night and respond. My husband has never been afraid to hang over the side of the pier to change out light bulbs, or to get in the suicide seat of the paint striping truck to set out cones along Mission Avenue during the busiest time of day. He's always the first one to pick up a shovel when his guys are clearing loose gravel from a parking lot, and he's been the last one to wait for traffic to clear so he can pick up the remaining barricades when the Fourth of July parade is over. According to his performance evaluations, his employees respect and admire him as a leader because he's always been willing to work alongside of them and get his hands dirty. So let me ask you, leaders of the city, when was the last time you cleaned out a storm drain during a downpour? When was the last time you rode along with a parking enforcement officer who was getting cussed out for issuing a citation on street sweeping day? When was the last time that you had to go out at 2:00 in the morning to pull a 100-pound light pole out of the street because a drunk driver had crashed into it? Or the last time you were called to a park bathroom to properly dispose of hypodermic needles left behind in the waste containers?
If you could please wrap it up.
When was the last time you guys actually visited the COC building and had a conversation with any of the supervisors there? I know that you don't have time to work alongside all the hundreds of employees in the city. You might not even have time to sit down at the negotiation tables with MICO, but you should have the time to look at their job descriptions, and you should have the time to request a fair, comparable study of what their counterparts make for the same job. At the end of the day, all the men and women who work for the city are on your team. They're on your side to, to ensure that Oceanside reaches its full, excuse me, they're on your side to ensure that Oceanside reaches its full potential. But if you can't look out for your own team, then how can you look out for the voters?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to ask you to applaud one more time right now, please. Please, applaud. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask you to not applaud after each of the speakers, and please stay to the two minutes as best you can. We still have 20-some speakers, so if you want to call the next few.
The following speakers are Jeff, Mark, Debbie, and Brian.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Jeff Fritley. My wife just spoke. I'm the electrical and traffic control supervisor for the city of Oceanside. I maintain the streetlights, traffic signals, and a graffiti, and a graffiti budget, signs, striping, stop legends, everything traffic control-related. I, I like my job. I feel fortunate to have it. But I look around other cities, and there's multiple people doing the same position. We were handed out the beginning of the year, the beginning of negotiations, a salary study from 2018, where in it, it said traffic, electrical supervisor was only comparison, not signs and striping. So did Chula Vista had both components in their, their department as two different people, and, I don't know, that seems pretty easy to get out comparisons that are real. I just, I just asked that we sit back and kind of look at these things and really assess what's fair and what's not fair for people who are doing multiple people's positions in other cities. Thanks.
I'm Debbie Forward, proud wife of Public Works employee Brian Forward. Honorable mayor Weiss and council members, I'm here tonight because the negotiations with MICO have broken down, and we, 75 MICO families, can't believe they would have if you all knew the full scope of who your management employees are and what they do. MICO members are decades-long public servants, alumni of Oceanside's high schools, and men and women who deliberately chose public careers here. Their children attend local schools, they conduct business in town, and they enjoy Oceanside's resources. They are experts in their fields, recognized and sought out by their professional organizations and peers throughout California and the nation. They are as invested in their jobs and in the city as any professionals can be. As family, we always see how MICO members serve the public and represent the municipality beyond their contracts. As frontline representatives, they leave home in the middle of the night during crisis to keep residents safe. They maintain relationships with residents that keep citizens happy while also facing belligerent, abusive, and violent interactions with the public. They add responsibilities to improve city programs without pay. They take calls, completely reports, and wait on required standby after hours and on weekends so services run smoothly for the public without pay. These few examples are routine for MICO families like mine. The extra time devoted without pay can be quantified, just ask our waiting children. And the stress of working under such conditions is measurable, just ask a MICO husband or wife who's also feeling it. Oceanside's own professional managers, who live within their means, are struggling with rent and mortgage. They cannot cover their children's public college tuition. Their doctor visits for stress-related illnesses and conditions are increasing. This, the city council cannot afford. Please do what our government is designed to do and take care of your own, our 75 families. Thank you.
MICO members, stand up, please. We've waited a long time tonight to speak to you, council, so thank you. I'm going to be speaking. Mark Sablest wasn't going to speak, and as you all got to understand, we came, planned to speak for three minutes. Brian Forward, president of MICO. Explained a little bit about our membership last week, and I'd like to continue to share with you more information on why we're here again tonight. As you no doubt heard today in closed session, we are in impasse with this employer as negotiating what should be our current contract. One of the important things that you need to know about this process is it has not been in negotiations. One of the reasons why we have affiliated with AFSMI is because we were told last fall, why even negotiate because we've already budgeted for what you're going to get, MICO? That's why we're here. 4.5% in eight years, and nothing planned for the next two years, so that's going to be 4.5% in 10 years to this employer, while the, the top managers in this city and across this nation, NCTD, Palomar College, you name it, are getting double-digit increases in a year. And 4.5% with nothing but a G-step is, is ridiculous for my membership. We've come to this as an open negotiation. We've even cut our CPI equity request in half, and there's been no discussion about any sort of base salary increase. As a matter of fact, the only thing that's above what's been given to other, other groups was a measly $50 a year towards the Plan 457. What's been done by the city is punitive, and the membership's not going to stand for it. Members, questions? Who has seen their buying power dwindle so that your lifestyle's changed in the last several years? Who has taken on more and more responsibility without consideration or compensation increase? Who has had their request for reclassification denied despite knowing you're doing the job that used to be done by a higher-paying employee or several employees? Who has had stress-related illness or impacts on their home life due to overwork and underpay? Who has tightened their belts, took on more to assist this employer during the Great Recession, only to have that same workload expected of you with no relief in sight? Lastly, who has committed to this city, its citizens, and wants this council to know that your story is not being heard? Mayor and council, we stand ready to negotiate in good faith and hope that you will reconsider your direction on how this group will be treated to conclude these negotiations. If you've seen this thus far, we intend to keep bringing you these messages until we know that we have been at least been heard by you and this community, and that we are treated fairly inequitably to the level of dedication and service that we have brought you. Thank you.
The following four speakers are Louise Balma, Susie Martinek, Arlene Hammerschmidt, and Lisa Hamilton.
Phew, this has been a very passionate night. I'm not used to this. My name's Louise Balma. I live in Southmore Hills, and I came here tonight to tell, tell you a little bit about an idea. Before North River Farms and before Measure Y, the Southmore Hills Association and the commercial farmers knew we needed to find common ground in order to preserve agriculture in Oceanside. We formed a committee and created Oceanside AgriVision, with the goal to preserve agricultural land, create vibrant agritourism, support the city, the community, the neighborhood, and most importantly, the farmer. We've made progress. Recycled water is coming for our farmers, agritourism tier-one, opportunities are now part of our zoning ordinance, and we also have the ability to grow cannabis. So, so we, we have been supporting our farmers and helping to preserve agriculture. We've been making progress. Then comes North River Farms, a piecemeal development that if approved, will use up all the entire currently planned infrastructure for Southmore Hills. And it's right, like, the 3,500 acres of Southmore Hills currently, current infrastructure cannot even support the 686 homes that North River Farms proposes. And we are currently zoned at 2.5 acres for an additional 1,200 home sites. Measure Y is a, is a reaction to try and stop North River Farms, but it will burden the remaining commercial agricultural operations in Southmore Hills. We have a general plan that is over 40 years old and needs to be updated. We have city staff visit Oceanside, the community support to preserve agriculture in Oceanside and support our farmers. We have one project that will change all that. We need to take a breath, step back, and look at the big picture and study what is best for our Oside future. Maybe what we need is a moratorium, or some way to press the pause button on this development and study what is best for agriculture region and the community that surrounds it. Thank you.
Yes on Y. Hello, my name is Susie Martinek. I am speaking against North River Farms' dense housing project of over 700 units, which also includes a 100-room hotel. This land is zoned for 71 dwelling units based on our general plan. Generally speaking, city council relies on the information generated for several, from several departments within their city. The folks that sit on city councils are not educated in all things far and wide. The departments of most cities are staffed by educated people in the area for which they are responsible. One such department is our planning department. The city of Oceanside has an excellent planning department. They are well-educated, forward-thinking, unbiased, and not afraid to tell the city council the true facts based on their years of experience and education. Our city council is made up of a random group of an attorney, a teacher, a sandwich maker, a manager, and a bread baker. The planning commission, the planning department is a group of educated professionals with specialization in urban planning. The city planning staff has not supported the North River Farms project. My question this evening is, why don't you listen to them?
Arlene Hammerschmidt, Ivy Road in Fire Mountain. Council members, mayor, and everyone at home. I am a retired OHS educator and an SDSU teacher educator. My third-generation Southern California farmer ancestors are calling to me to support Measure Y. So let's get down to some of the essentials here. Excuse me. It's pretty simple. You buy land, you know what it's zoned for, the value of the land is tied to the zoning. Landowners should have to jump through hoops if they want the government to grant them an increase in value by changing the zoning. When we get tired of our land, wouldn't it be great to simply change the zoning so it increases like a thousand percent in value right before selling it? That would be a great way to make a profit. But that wouldn't be particularly fair to the rest of the community who also bought land with the same zoning. City council is supposed to weigh the public benefit versus the landowner's benefit when considering zoning changes. The zoning changes should not be a guarantee, especially when zoning up will impose serious impacts on infrastructure. But when our elected representatives are ostensibly elected by vast sums of developer money, we can't exactly trust them to make a fair decision. This Measure Y makes sure that the general public can weigh in on a decision about whether the government should give value increase to a landowner just for the asking. I thank you, JP Theberg, for the permission to share your words tonight. I thank you, JP Theberg, for the permission to share your words tonight.
Lisa Hamilton, 323 South Dittmar. I'd like to address the confusion over voting yes or no on Y. One of the main people featured in mailers and also speaking for Keep Farming Oceanside, a measure, an organization which opposes Measure Y, is Neil Nagata. He claims he wants to keep farming, as his family has done for years. If this were really so, why has he proposed a development on North River Road in Mall Hills that would put 400 residences on a parcel of 25.6 acres? This is not North River Farms. This is another proposal altogether. This property is currently zoned agricultural. When he wants it changed to residential, that would be high-density residential, it would add an average of 3,200 auto trips daily. It seems to me that Mr. Nagata does not want to keep farming Oceanside, but rather to become a developer of high-density housing in an area without the infrastructure to support it. This sort of development is what Measure Y would put before a vote of Oceanside citizens who will have to pay for the infrastructure to support Mr. Nagata's project. To really protect farming in Oceanside, I urge citizens in Oceanside to vote yes on Y. Thank you.
The next four speakers are Larry Cornet, Dennis Martinek, Dennis Huckabee, and Donald Betts.
Yeah, good evening still. Members of council, Honorable Mayor, I wanted to talk to you about my support of Y, very simply for the climate issues that have been spoken already. We are in a difficult situation. My hope is that the new council, whatever that's going to look like, is going to be able to adopt a climate action plan, and I know that I have partners here. If I am the fortunate candidate who wins, will be able to pass a climate action plan. What I didn't expect was hearing from the laborers and management of Oceanside. I'll tell you something from my background. I've managed 80 people. There were eight managers and 10 direct reports to them. I was written up in a magazine once that said, "Why do your employees, why would your employees walk through fire for you?" And I said, "The answer's easy," because they know that I'd walk through fire for them. Though I didn't expect to speak on that particular issue, I think it's incredibly important. You have to treat your employees like gold, because the amount of money that it costs to retrain other people is absolutely nonsensical when it comes to keeping and making sure that good people stay employed and do the job that you need them to do. So I'll end with that. Thank you for your time.
My name is Dennis Martinek. I reside at 1537 Sleeping Indian Road. I'm a supporter of Measure Y, the SOAR initiative. SOAR stands for Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources. The planning map that you have in front of you shows the open space areas in green, the agricultural area in light yellow in the upper right-hand corner. Those are the lands that would be affected by Measure Y. The open space areas, according to 2.6 of the land use element, includes public parks, flood channels, public and private outdoor recreation facilities, water recharge areas, and water bodies. They're designated as open space. The agriculture area is clear, and it is designated as agriculture. It's for farming. The objective, again, of Measure Y is to save these areas. They're precious to people. You've heard that from several people tonight. The Natos and Dale Group report on Measure Y that the city council commissioned had several conclusions. Here are three of them. Open space. SOAR, which is Measure Y, would create additional barriers to the conversion of parks and open space to other land uses. We agree that Measure Y would preserve parks and open space. It's on page 18 of the report. Another one is traffic congestion. Since SOAR would likely inhibit the development of more intensive uses on land currently designated for agriculture, it would potentially result in less traffic congestion than would otherwise occur. We agree that SOAR would result, or Measure Y would result, in less traffic congestion. So we encourage voters in Oceanside to vote yes on Measure Y. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Dennis Huckabee. I live in District 1. I am past president of Buena Vista Audubon Society, an environmental organization with a membership of 2,200 member households here in coastal North County, and Buena Vista Audubon Society is strongly in favor of Measure Y, which will appear on the ballot in this coming November. The full title of Measure Y is Voters' Rights Initiative to Preserve Open Space and Farmland. Now, we hear a lot about conversion of land zoned for agriculture into that horrible North River Farms residential development, but our open spaces threaten too. Think of El Corazon. Already approved are 70 townhouses for El Corazon, 3,000 square feet of commercial land. There's plans been put forward for more homes, a hotel, an 8,000-feet sports arena, an aquatic center. Our open space, our public parks, our flood channels, our outdoor recreation facilities such as golf courses, water recharge areas and water bodies, all can be rezoned and developed if three votes, a simple majority of the city council, votes to do so. Measure Y protects our open spaces as well as agricultural land. Our open space is where we go to breathe, to walk, bike, golf, play tennis, fish, paddle, swim, surf, and bird. Think of the hawks you enjoy seeing soar overhead. Our open space is too precious to be left to the whim of three council members. Please vote yes on Y to protect open space. Thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Donald Betts. I live in Oceana. On Friday, I boarded a North County Transit bus and picked up one of these brochures, flyers, and I was appalled by what I read, fare changes that are being proposed. Across the board, the adult fares will remain basically unchanged. Youth 18 and under will go down, but seniors, pretty much across the board, will go up. To give you a couple of examples, on a premium regional pass, the seniors, or the youth pays $50 right now, that will go down to 36, whereas seniors who pay $25, that will go up to 36. On the coaster pass, for monthly pass, youth is paying 82.50, that will go down to $65, whereas seniors right now pay 41.25, that will go up to $65, an increase of almost $25. I don't mind moderate increases to pay our fare share. The Transit District hasn't raised their fares in a while, but I do not think that seniors should have to foot the entire bill as opposed to other groups. They should all be, it should be fair to everybody, and it's not done on the backs of seniors who can least afford it. I urge the council to meet with Sandag and to try to modify these revisions. Thank you.
The next four speakers are Chris Kagan, Jim Jenkins, Victor Roy, and Michael Bartholomew.
I'm going to leave a couple of brochures with the clerk in case you want to read the information.
Thanks for everyone staying so late. I'm Chris Kagan. I'm a candidate for District 2. I try not to give too much of a political speech here. I am one of the last candidates in District 2 here tonight. One thing that I really want to encourage the council to really think about is to revise the general plan. It's currently 40 years old, and I think that it really needs a revision. We're seeing a lot of these spot developments going on, and I think we need a revision to that plan. One of the things I really noticed coming to these council meetings is that we really need to provide a voice to people who don't have as big of a voice that they're all, and that includes, you know, providing a voice to the homeless, providing the voice to the elderly. A lot of things that we don't hear about is about our children and the next generation. They do not have a voice in this, and ensuring that children's safety. I think we approved a project last council meeting in which we built a project by a school in which there's no sidewalks for the kids to walk home. And I think it's important to talk about our civil servants that we heard tonight who, you know, don't have the ability to maybe ask for the raise or have that. They have to demand it from the county and the city, so I think that's really important. And finally, the environment. The environment doesn't have a voice. It's open to us to really consider about the legacy that we want to leave behind. And I want to actually give special thanks, call out to Esther Sanchez. Thank you for being a fresh air tonight. I mean, we really do need council people to be willing to change their mind when things have changed. I mean, 10 years is a long time for a project. I mean, we really do have to revisit that. The fact that you're willing to change and not dig in your heels and think about the opportunities and change how Oceanside has changed is really a fresh, a breaths air, and I encourage all of the councilmen to be willing to be more flexible in the future. Thank you.
You.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, I would like to convey some information to our community regarding one of our city council candidates for District Number 2. Dana Corso has been a huge supporter, backer, and a true community leader for the people of this city. Dana has been the president of Action, the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods, since the inception of this group in 2010, along with the support of Councilwoman Esther Sanchez. She has led the fight, along with Councilwoman Sanchez, to defeat Prop's ENF in 2012, saving our rent control for our seniors, veterans, and families on fixed incomes. She led the fight for Jeffrey's Ranch and had fought against the Gregory Canyon landfill. Her continued efforts to reduce or eliminate urban sprawl, which has been a big discussion tonight, is very vital, which is greatly needed based on what we experienced in 2017 with the Lilac Fire. These are the continued efforts and support that Dana will bring as your next new councilwoman for District 2. With Dana Corso, I believe that balance will be brought back to this city council. As a reminder in addition to Dana Corso for District 2, I'd also like to bring your attention to vote for Victor Roy for our future treasurer, and also I really want to back the vote yes on Y for SOAR, Save Open Spaces and Agricultural Resources. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Victor Roy. I'm running for Oceanside City Treasurer. Please vote for me. I'll be responsible for protecting and safeguarding the city's finances and money. I'm a lifelong successful investor, and I have a comprehensive knowledge of CDs, bonds, and other types of city investments, and in accordance with state and federal laws. I've carefully studied the city's financial reports. I'm an Oceanside homeowner and also a resident and taxpayer for 20 years, and I do a lot of great things for Oceanside and charities. I'm a founding member of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation. I'm a college graduate from UCLA, and I'm retired from a successful aviation career of 27 years. I am independent in that I have no family members that are employed by the City of Oceanside, whereas my opponent did not disclose that he is the husband of the Assistant City Attorney when he did his interview and was appointed. He also did not, he also said he would not run, though filling the vacancy. I did a public records request, and on this DVD that I got, anybody can do that and hear his interview, so you can hear that he did not disclose. And I stand for providing greater transparency for everyone, and I will seek to find opportunities and manage risks so our city will stay on track towards reaching its goals. I am the better candidate. I care about Oceanside. I'm ready, willing, and able to serve you and our great city. And as a native Californian, I'm also bilingual. Hola, hablo español. Hola amigos y amigas, y por favor dame sus votos y por las votantes. I'm also for gender pay equality, and I'm endorsed by our great councilwoman, Esther Sanchez. And it's time for a change, so I ask for your vote. Please vote for me, Victor Roy, Oceanside City Treasurer. I stand in the great...
Please wrap it up, Mr. Roy.
I will. I stand for Rosemary Jones. I dedicate my run for this candidacy to Rosemary Jones.
My name's Michael Bartholomew. I live at 1510 Surrey Court, and I'm here to talk about the homeless and the problems down at the pier. I've been going to the pier for over nine years. My wife and I have been feeding the cats there for over nine years. The area is getting degraded really fast. We've got the new change in the law about allowing the homeless to be able to basically camp wherever they feel like camping. Now, I've gone through this somewhat before, and when we've gone through this before, we've had big messes. We've had, especially with human waste, with vandalism, and with everything, you know, with the problems of the homeless. I say homeless, and I really don't believe that these people are homeless. I look at these people down there, and the demographics I see are mainly young people. They're mainly people that are maybe 19 to maybe 25 years old. That's not all of them, but that's the majority of them. Their biggest thing down there is to be able to sit at Camp Oceanside and get high, do their drugs, and do their thing. I've seen it. I watch it. I see it every day. I'm imploring the city, I'm just asking the city, to, for one thing, include the recreation center, the pier, the amphitheater, and the children's play area as being a sanctuary for these people from living there. It's only going to get worse. I've seen people where women have tried to bring their children into the gymnasium to go to, for recreation time, and they get cat calls, or they're stepping over some guy that's all passed out on the floor. The smell, the other things about what goes on down there is just absolutely unbelievable. I'm sorry that this thing had happened, and I'm not blaming the city for this, because I can tell you that the city workers down there, I can't give enough kudos for the amount of cleanup that they have to do. You know, they talk about the pooper scoopers in San Francisco. You've got them here. And it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. The police department does everything it can, but when it gets started going, it seems like there's some kind of constraint that it's got to follow by. I'm asking to see if the city can think out of the box, to see if they can do something about this issue. And good luck. Thank you very much.
The next four speakers are Joe Hill, Pat Hughes, Nadine Scott, and Maggie Matthews.
Honorable Mayor, city council, Joe Hill, 2855 Rutgers Place. We're at a crossroads. Integral is Oceanside's Caruso. We all know what happened in Carlsbad. This is all about money, power, and zoning. Integral, like Caruso and Carlsbad, must think Oceanside voters are gullible and uninformed. Why are they spending $683,000 of their own money to make a no-on-Y committee and sabotage our election? Integral brought the North River Project to you folks. The planning commission said no. You said go back to the drawing board, come up with something else. Integral was not expecting opposition to the project from voters who are tired of projects being placed in the wrong areas, and Measure Y being on the ballot to allow only the voters to approve or deny developer sprawl in the right place instead of only three council members. They formed the no-on-Y political committee with two big farming owners. They made those two farming owners officers on that committee. One of the owners actually said they're willingly accepting money from outside developers. They used a public relations media company in Santa Barbara to send out deceptive and misleading information to every registered voter in Oceanside. They did this three times with a letter and two fancy mailers to purposely confuse, divide, and create a chaotic situation amongst Oceanside voters to attempt to defeat Measure Y. They are attempting to influence city officials who currently could decide zoning changes for all projects with political contributions from local no-on-Y farmers who are receiving money from Integral's North River Farms Project. And this includes candidates and non-candidates on the city council. But they don't stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Hughes waited three hours to speak, and she had to leave, so she gave me her statement, which is fairly short. May I please present that?
She can turn it to the clerk, but you've already spoken, Mr. Roy. I'm sorry. Turn it to the clerk and we'll...
Can just turn it into me.
So you're not going to let me read her statement?
No.
So the next speaker is Nadine Scott.
She'll provide copies to us.
So the next speaker is Maggie Matthews.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and council folk. I'm relatively new to Oceanside and glad it's my forever home. I'm recently trying to understand how our city works and have been doing what my dad and the League of Women Voters insist on, following the money in politics. There are recent significant concerns across all four districts about what your residents consider to be improper spot zoning and improper rezoning, particularly when your rezoning defies the Planning Commission's direction. I learned this the hard way with the city council outcome of the horrible hotel, which will now be crammed into the most imperfect and unsafe, unsafe location possible on Oceanside Boulevard, aesthetically destroying Oceanside's gateway to our beautiful beaches. So it concerns me when I study your recent body records and learn that the particular council folks seem to lean toward quick wins for developers at the expense of what is smart, right, and aesthetically appropriate for our districts. There's an alarm that needs to be sounded. For the reason that the majority of our elected officials seem inclined to support development over the concerns of Oceanside constituents, I urge the mayor and city council and all residents of Oceanside to vote yes on Y, so as to put the rezoning vote, if that's what the developers and a handful of landowners want, to the people. Voting yes on Y gives residents the right to evaluate and vote on what the financial impacts of rezoning Moro Hills will mean to us, the residents and taxpayers, because it's us, the residents and taxpayers, who will be stuck with footing the bill for the yet-to-be-constructed sewer, road, and other infrastrust, infrastructure expenses which the developer doesn't have to pay for, and because it's us, the residents and taxpayers, who will have to contend and deal with the impending traffic of the seven-hundred-plus high-density units already planned for an area that isn't equipped for it. I urge a resounding vote of yes on Y. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rocco and Bill Bachelor.
Honorable Mayor and council, my name is Cindy Rocco, and I live in South Oceanside, and I'm here for yes on Y. And I wanted to talk about the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar lie that's going on right now for the ag land, and it says that it's zoned for two and a half homes per acre, and we're going to end up with all these houses and the catastrophe postcards and things that go out there. But actually, it's been there for, what, thirty, forty years under the same zoning? I don't see all those homes out there. So certain individuals that do speak to all those homes being the problem have no water to, hold that, whatever. Okay. So I just wanted to give you some perspective that yes on Y. So anyway, if you want to keep, you want to, if you vote yes on Y, you're going to keep this. But here, here's some perspective. They call it keep farming in Oceanside, and the major funding is by North River Farms. It sounds all warm and fuzzy, but follow the money. From research, both Nagata and Milano Senior have wanted to develop and, so that they can get the infrastructure out there. Milano about six, seven years ago, and he wanted one acre lot, so that gets rid of two and a half acres, and Nagata on the border with four hundred homes. One second. With no-on-Y. So you're going to, that's fifteen blocks approximately, courtesy of my neighbor, and if you times that by fifty, that's what no-on-Y is going to get you. So definitely follow the money, and if you support the yes-on-Y, please volunteer and contribute to us. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Room's almost empty. MECO folks are gone. My name is Bill Bachelor, four-three-eight South Cleveland. Been here for about thirty years. So we can get personal, because it's kind of quiet. My wife is a member of MECO, been with the city for ten years. She's a member today. She will not be a member in three weeks. Today, she accepted a job with another city. That city said they have a hard time finding talent like this, offered a twenty percent increase just to sign up, five percent in six months, five percent after that, every year thereafter, for the next three years. When we hear what we think is hyperbole from the chief negotiators that you guys are going to lose talent, when I make it personal like this, it becomes real. They're real people, and you are. The city's going to pay out tens of thousands of dollars for the vacation that she hasn't been able to take. They're going to pay for recruiting. They're going to pay to try to fill her seat in, and they're going to pay somebody for ten years to get somebody with ten years of experience. So we have no skin in this game. The truth is, is we should be celebrating tonight because our family income just went up, but it is with a heavy heart. We love this city. We love living here. She loved being part of it. We didn't want to leave it, but it became to the point where we simply had to. Just remember, there's real people on the other sides of those numbers. Thanks.
And we will have one more speaker. Can you please introduce yourself?
I'm Sheila Kada, and I'm going to read Patty Hughes's letter. My name is Patty Hughes, and I am the business manager for Gilligan Groves and have been for the past twenty years. Mrs. Gilligan has requested I read this statement on behalf of the Gilligan family. As one of the largest family farms with over three hundred acres and landowners in South Moro Hills, we support the Yes on Y campaign and see it as a positive for the entire community. Not only will it preserve open space, farmland, parks, and recreation, it will allow Oceanside voters the right to vote on major changes in our cities, in our city which affects us all. We look forward to farming for many years to come, have thoroughly reviewed the initiatives, and we see no evidence SOAR will negatively impact farming. All of us share the responsibility to act as honorable stewards of this precious land. We are privileged to farm and reside on and to be thoughtful of what we leave behind for future generations. Thank you for listening to my message. I am Patty Hughes. I am the business manager for Gilligan Groves. Please vote yes for Y. And also, please vote yes for Y. We cannot afford the people of Oceanside to pay for the infrastructure that will make the developers, let the, the developers from out of our city walk away with millions of dollars, and we'll be left holding the, the, paying for the infrastructure and having all the bills for that. People of Oceanside can't afford it. So please, yes on Y.
Councilman McCurn.
Yes.
Okay. I just got to make one statement before we go. A candidate for the treasurer came here and spoke about the appointment for treasurer. I was fully aware of Mr. Tricky's relationship with another county, with another employee before I voted for him. So if Mr. Victor Roy doesn't have the integrity to tell the truth when he's at the dais, I doubt if he'd have the integrity to do the job.
So I'd like to move to item twenty-two, which is my request to make appointments actually to two commissions as a result of unscheduled resignations. So I would move that those appointments be made.
Motion approved, five-zero.
Are there any general council member comments?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out again to everyone that was involved with the Mission Cove Project. That one, I very much championed, from acquisition of the land through the funding and, and when times were really hard and it looked like the council was going to stop supporting it, we, I really, really pushed hard to make sure that it happened. And this past week, we did have the ribbon cutting, we did have tours. It was a wonderful, beautiful building with inside courtyard, lots of space, and there were, there were folks that were already living in the units. You could tell there was such a, you know, such a happiness in the way that, that they were presenting themselves. And again, the person who gave the, and this was a hundred-and-thirty-eight, a hundred-and-thirty-eight affordable units for, at incomes at or below thirty percent, excuse me, thirty to sixty percent of AMI, with twenty percent leased to homeless, including veterans, green point rating of platinum. I mean, wonderful, beautiful. The testimony by the person, by one, because there was, of course, they could have picked other people, but this one person who really gave, you know, a reflection of her heart and what it really meant to her, these are the folks that, that really make a difference to me in my life. I have always, always cared about those who do not have means. I am part of a whole generation in the past and moving forward that really have these struggles, these daily kind of struggles. For me, I have been a public servant, and, and right now, there are, it's the silly season, and, you know, I've already had the second hit piece, you know, attacking me based on the fact that I don't care about people. I would have laughed about it, except that this is so serious to me in terms of my commitment. I was a public defender for twenty years. Before that, I was a lawyer doing poverty law. I have always, always, always given of myself. That's why I'm not a rich person. That's why I don't have ten, ten homes that I'm leasing out. So bottom line is, I have done so much because I care, above and beyond being a councilwoman. The one thousand one hundred and seventy-four affordable housing units, I'm so proud of that, that we have put in. The two thousand two hundred mobile home units outside of the council that I was able to save, I mean, that was going to be so hard to watch, seniors and veterans overnight becoming homeless, and the six-hundred-and-ninety-six homes with Costa Arena, and being the attorney for that as well, regarding the complaints by people trying to break it open and make the housing go so high, sky-high, but, you know, that would have destroyed the lives of our seniors. So a total of four thousand seventy units, this is what I'm personally, personally proud of, and I do, I am going to continue to fight for affordable housing and fight to resolve our homeless issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. Item twenty-three is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Articles Three, Four, Fourteen, and Thirty of the zoning ordinance to facilitate agritourism, land use classifications, and development regulations.
Move adoption.
Okay, then we are adjourned to three-thirty on Wednesday, November seventh.